Why would I? If we could reconvene our meeting to open session, the board has been an executive session since six o'clock to discuss three tenure recommendations, contractual matter, and illegal matter. Will you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Robert Teigen.
Catherine Natto.
John Wallston.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Meredith Moryarty.
Ewan McNamee.
Lauren Grasso.
John McPhillips.
I wouldn't think so, but do we have any PIG or Supa students here tonight? You guys are gonna get it in right under the wire, huh? Okay, you guys have to stay until the meeting is over, or nine o'clock, whichever comes first, and just don't leave without signing out up here, so that you get credit for being here. And I just want to thank Glenmont for hosting us this evening. Always nice to make our way around. First up is our approval of minutes. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the January 8th, 2025, regular board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That carries item three, meeting reports, and first is our superintendent's report.
Sure. Just one thing to report. As everyone knows, we moved, when we, to our food service program, to a system called Link, where parents can pay online for their food balances and whatnot. And we had been using My School Bucks prior, but we also use My School Bucks for AP exam fees for the school store, for other things, ticket sales and things such as that. We thought we were going to be able to use the link for all of those, and unfortunately, we've just not been able to make it work for the needs of the district. So, moving forward, we're working on, I think we're going to revert back to using My School Bucks for everything outside of food service. We're required to use Link for food services because we're part of the BOSI's food service program, and that's the system we need to use. However, for the other applications, exams, and ticket sales, and fundraising and things, we certainly can go back to My School Bucks. I think it was more user-friendly for families and students, so we'll let everyone know. We do have to go back and reset up the accounts and things such as that, but it just makes sense, given some of the limitations with the Link system, some of the additional costs associated with them that we're just not able to, it's not our product, so we're under kind of what they require. So going back to My School Bucks for now, I think makes sense. So we'll let everyone know when we're ready to go back to that. But I just want to give the board a heads up on.
So we'll have, there'll be the two
Right.
different programs.
Correct.
One for food, one for everything else.
Correct.
If you previously had a My School Bucks account, do you need to next, set up a new one? If we go back to it, or will that old one still be there somewhere?
Is that still?
Okay. It would still work?
Yeah, so you want to set it back up. Okay, so we'll, again, we're still in the process of getting it up and going. We'll let everyone know when it is, so. And that's my only report, except thanks to everyone for coming out on such a cool night tonight.
I was surprised when I went into Link just to put food money in. I'd expected, I think when we set it up, it was supposed to be three bucks service fee, and they tried to charge me fifteen bucks. Just to remind people, it's still free to send a check, so I still, I just sent a check into school.
Yes.
There's no fee for that.
Right.
But it was obnoxious being, yeah.
Yeah, you can absolutely send a check in.
Any other questions? Next up is our board report, and I just wanted to note that we did have a policy committee meeting since our last meeting, and there are a number of policies that are on for a first read this evening at the end. And then I just wanted to congratulate all of the cast, and crew, and parents, and staff that were involved with the production of Annie at the middle school this last weekend. I had a chance to see it, it was terrific, and like everybody, most importantly, was having a lot of fun doing the show. So I just wanted to put that out there. Anybody have anything else? Next are our student reports. Do we have anybody here from the high school student senate? It's too cold. I know it is also midterms and regents week, so. And do we have anybody from the middle school here this evening?
We want to congratulate the cast, crew, and directors of the middle school musical production of Annie, a great show all around. Character t-shirts are due to arrive at the end of this month and will be distributed to all students and staff as soon as they arrive. The end of our second quarter of our school year is this Friday, January 24th. Report cards and honor roll will be posted shortly afterward at the end of the, next week. The middle school equality committee ran kindness micro-assemblies during Home Base on Tuesday, January 7th. The Home Base meetings were led by the Bethlehem High School students who taught about recognizing differences, celebrating people's strengths, and being kind to all. The equality committee hopes to run another round of these later in March. We want to remind all of our peers that in observance of the Lunar New Year next Wednesday, January 29th, there will be no school for students.
Thank you. The kids know, right? Yes, a reminder to all of our parents that your students will be home next Wednesday. And do we have some friends from Glenmont here this evening?
I'd like to invite up nine of our fifth graders here from Glenmont Elementary School to tell you, the board, about what's been happening here at our school.
Members of the Board of Education, Ms. Monroe, Dr. Hurst, Mr. McPhillips, and community members, my name is Carter. I would like to welcome you to Glenmont School. We're excited to share with you what has been happening here at our school this year.
Hi. Hi. I lost my voice. I can't talk. You can do it. Hi, my name is Tessa. I can't do it.
It's okay. We'll come back to you.
Hi, my name is Ani. This year, fifth graders have an additional responsibility to be peer leaders who assist younger students at recess. Any fifth grader who was interested in becoming a peer leader had to complete an application and an interview in order to be accepted into the program. After participating in three training sessions, we will soon be assigned to interact with younger students during their recess periods, both by helping them find fun things to do and also by guiding them in social interactions with one another.
Hi, my name is Ben. This year, our school is focusing each month on a positive character trait such as love of learning or social intelligence. At the end of the month, we have a school assembly during which a student in each class is recognized by the teachers for demonstrating that trait. These students receive a certificate while the whole school applauds for them. At the assembly, a class also shows a video which they made illustrating the upcoming month's positive character trait. January's character trait is perseverance.
Hi, my name is Emma. We have been excited to participate in the Legrow program at Glenmont School this year. Together with our parents, we decide on a project we can do at home all by ourselves. Projects have included packing our own lunches, walking to a friend's house by ourselves, learning to ride a bike, and picking out our own clothes in the morning. By doing things independently, we learn to be confident and resilient. Our parents also learned that they don't have to do as much for us as we grow up.
Hi, my name is Fiona. We like to have fun together at Glenmont School, whether at the Halloween Bowl Field Day or our upcoming lip sync. Our PTA plays a big role in funding these fun events as well as academic extras, like a residency for our environmental educator, George Steele. We are grateful for their support.
Hello, my name is Arnie. We are looking forward to another special event funded by our PTA, a visit from author and illustrator Jason Chin on March 26th. Mr. Chin, a Caldecott Award medalist, has written and illustrated numerous award-winning books that combine his passion for nature, science, and art. Mr. Chin has written about how having a published illustrator visiting his school when he was growing up inspired him. Maybe he will inspire one of us to become a famous author or illustrator someday.
Hi, my name is Logan. Next week is Lunar New Year, which means it is now a school holiday in New York State. Did you know that 2025 is the year of the snake? We learned that last week when we had the honor of welcoming members from the Chinese Community Center to our school last week for a Lunar New Year Assembly. It was fun to learn about this holiday and see the performers.
Hello, my name is Jada. In less than a week, Glenmont 4th and 5th graders will be performing in this very room for our January music concerts. Students in our 4th and 5th grade orchestras will play, as well as those in our 5th grade band. And all 4th and 5th grade students will sing in our choirs. Please join us next Tuesday evening at 6:00 PM for Grade 4 and 7:00 PM for Grade 5. Thank you again to the Board of Education for visiting Glenmont School tonight.
Hi, my name is Tessa. As the leaders in the school, we, as fifth graders, have special responsibilities. This includes raising and lowering the flag each day and making the morning announcements over the loudspeaker for the whole school. These are important jobs that we have looked forward to doing since we were in kindergarten.
Tessa just demonstrated our character trait of the month, perseverance, so. Kudos to our fifth graders, thank you. You guys want to come over here? Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Talking to us.
You guys did a great job.
Thank you.
Such great speakers.
Awesome. Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you. Thanks for hanging in.
Stella, is it okay if our fifth graders and their families head home so they can have a good night's sleep?
Yes, definitely. I was just about to say, you are, of course, welcome to stay, but you also can go home and get a good night's sleep, too. And our presentation this evening is on the ELA curriculum pilot process, so I would invite our presenters to come on up.
Good evening. My name is Dan Hash, I'm the K-12 ELA supervisor. Tonight, we'll provide an overview of our ELA curriculum pilot process. One of the great parts about working as the ELA supervisor is the group of specialists that we have to help support specific tasks and needs as they arise. As a quick round of introductions, let me identify and share the roles, as you will hear from each of these amazing individuals, as we go through our presentation. Laura Heffernan, our Glenmont principal and cabinet co-facilitator. Laura and I work closely together on the management pieces of the curriculum. She is our liaison to the other principals, so as we work to bring in new curricula, we can make sure that everyone is in the know and gather feedback from that group regarding implementation and training needs. Jen Spila is our multi-tiered system of supports coordinator. Jen has been instrumental in thinking about the measures that we use and data that we need to collect to identify both our strengths and areas of improvement. Allison Hepfer is our K-2 instructional coach. Allison is our amazing boots-on-the-ground teacher support. She pulls from her years of experience with the primary grades to help think about how decisions will look and work in the classroom. This presentation will be broken into two parts. The first will review the three primary reasons that pushed us toward finding a new ELA program to help support our learners. The second will review the process itself. Our district goals continue to serve as a compass for our work as we search for a program that will support each of the domains listed. This alignment is reflected in the instructional routines themselves, but in ELA, also through the text sets that the curriculum uses to support the instruction. We use overarching steps, bless you, in building a selection and pilot process, which you will hear outlined in more detail as we work through this presentation. These steps include reflecting on our previous adoption and pilot work, creating a structure that our cabinet can follow to review the needs of our students and program options, and finally piloting the selected program in a way that and finally piloting the selected program in a way that would allow us to have a number of users in different environments, capture data, and provide feedback for cabinet decisions. Let me turn things over to Allison, who will walk us through the reflection process.
Hi, everybody. It's nice to see you. So I'm going to bring you back to 2022, and that's when we decided we needed to look at a new phonics program for grades K to 2. So we looked at several different options, and we decided to take a look at Foundations. We went around to different school districts and talked to different teachers using it. And of course, as you know, we decided to pilot Foundations. So K-2 teachers across the district, I was one of them, we piloted it in the spring, and then we took all that information back to cabinet, and we made the decision to adopt Foundations as our phonics program. We then, in the spring, had, at our superintendent's conference day, we had some of the materials out, so the teachers were able to take a look at them. And that's the best part, teachers want to see the posters and all the good stuff. So they took a look at all of that, and again, we made the decision to adopt. And then, this was great, which the teachers really loved, in June, we were able to have all of the materials delivered to the school district, and we were able to have trainers from Foundations basically do an unboxing and open up the kit and walk all of the teachers through all of the materials so that if they chose, they could look at it over the summer and get prepared for September. And then in September, after they were in full swing, we had the Foundation trainers for a full day through Zoom going through what typical lessons look like and to answer questions that some of the teachers still had about the program. So you're going to hear a little bit tonight about ELA cabinet, so I thought it would be important for you to understand what the cabinet is. I have been a member of the cabinet for a very long time. Obviously, as a classroom teacher, I was a member, but I'm also now part of it as the K-2 instructional coach. So the cabinet is made up of several members. You have teachers from every building. We have a representative of our primary from K-2 as well as intermediate, 3-5. We also sometimes have reading teachers on cabinet, and they have a really nice perspective to provide. We also have Laura and Dan. Jen also goes. I attend. And the ELA cabinet is basically the decision-making team for the district. They take all of the information that they hear from teachers in their buildings, bring it back to cabinet, and we make the decision on whether to adopt a new program. And so when you hear about the pilot process we're doing this evening, you'll see that cabinet is the one who will make the final stamp as to whether we will adopt a new program. And I'm going to give it now over to Jen, who's going to talk to you about why we're now on the journey for a new ELA program.
Hi, everyone. So just a quick refresher about what the science of reading is and the points toward the need of systematic and direct instruction for the big six competencies, which have been a major focus of the New York State Education Literacy Briefs, which also encompasses EDLO 818, which requires each school district to ensure that their curriculum in grades pre-K to 3 aligns with the elements of instructional best practices. Okay, so here they are, the big six. So oral language, that refers to spoken language skills that form the foundation for reading and writing. It's the ability to understand. We call that receptive language. And to use spoken words effectively, that's expressive language. The next one is phonological awareness, and that's the ability to recognize and manipulate sounds in spoken language. Phonics is the relationship between the sounds of spoken language, phonemes, and the letters or groups of letters that they represent, graphemes, used to represent the sounds in written language. Comprehension, of course, is the process of understanding and making meaning of text, and this is the ultimate goal of reading. So all the things that we need to do to inform the process to really get to where students understand, have a deep understanding of what they're reading. Fluency is the ability to read text accurately, quickly, and with precisity and expression that's appropriate to aid in comprehension. And of course, vocabulary is the collection of words that a person understands. The bigger the vocabulary and the deeper understanding, the better you're going to be able to comprehend what you read. So where does all that leave us and how did this inform our process? So we reviewed our current programs that were in place, and we saw a lot of strengths and some areas that were gaps and there were inconsistencies. So that sort of informed our work in selecting a new program and what we decided we wanted to pilot. And we want to explore other programs that more comprehensively integrate all of these different six competencies. I wanted to talk briefly about a knowledge-based curricula, okay? And this is in line with the science of reading. And essentially, what that is, is it's a framework assigned to build background knowledge so all students have a deeper understanding kind of before they dig in to the nuts and bolts and processes of reading and writing. They've got that foundational knowledge of what they're going to be learning about, which makes everything easier to comprehend. It typically brings in knowledge across subject areas, particularly social studies and science, not replacing those, of course, but building that knowledge framework for them to be able to make meaning of what they're reading. Let's see. So the student learning is really rooted in inquiring information and using that information to demonstrate their understanding when they're speaking or writing. To make it kind of simply, a knowledge-based curricula is you're learning about things, and kids love to learn about things. So, you know, when you come home at the dinner table, kids might, you're like, what do you learn today? Oh, well, you know, we don't want to hear things like, I'm learning about how to write an essay. I mean, yeah, of course, that's one, but we really want to learn the content-rich environments that they're getting through their curricula. So that's knowledge-based. Turn it over to...
So the actual process of the pilot. So first, we needed to explore the language arts curricular products available on the market. So Dan reached out to other local districts to talk to their ELA supervisors. We scoured professional publications and websites, talked to other contacts that we have, and eventually selected a list of publishers and their products that we felt were worthy of bringing to the cabinet to learn more about. Before the publishers came to present to us, however, we did ask the cabinet to first define what criteria we should consider, such as, for example, of course, alignment to the New York State standards, high-quality instructional design, a product that offers differentiation, and one that includes texts that reflect the growing diversity of our students and the world that we live in. Those were all priorities, as well as some other elements. The cabinet then spent a full day hearing from different publishers and reviewing their materials that they brought to share with us or, you know, they had sent to us because some of them were via Zoom. The cabinet members had a rubric that they used to keep track of the different curricula to help narrow down the list in a thoughtful manner. And then after we had... Go to the next slide, please, Brittany. After we had eliminated a few choices based on that initial review, we wanted then to gather as much information as possible about the remaining options. So we invited a small handful of teachers to conduct a couple mini-pilots for WIT and Wisdom and CKLA. And by mini-pilot, I mean that maybe two teachers taught a single unit to get a general feel for the curricula. Originally, we had thought about doing the same with a third product, ARC, but we decided at the last minute to remove them because they really did not meet our criteria and we felt like we were reaching at that point. We also, Dan set up two Zoom meetings with other districts, which had recently adopted each of the two remaining curricula that we were exploring, to hear how it was going for them. They were both a year or two into implementation, what they liked, what they didn't like, any advice they could provide us. And these Zoom meetings were each an hour before school with the full cabinet in attendance so everyone could hear all of this information firsthand. Now I'll turn it over to Dan to continue with the process.
So while those mini-pilots were being conducted, the Knowledge Matters Campaign updated their site with additional curricula that fit their standards. Bookworms was that new addition in an effort to do our due diligence, along with this program receiving support from local educational consultants. It was recommended that we take a look at this program. We scheduled a presentation with representatives in the same fashion that we conducted with the other products, and after evaluating materials using the same rubric, we found that it aligned with a number of our wants and needs. In particular, what stood out to our cabinet members was the use of authentic texts and interdisciplinary knowledge-based opportunities. After its unanimous voting as our top choice, combined with the concerns raised about the other products during our mini-pilots, the decision was made to move forward with a pilot in only this one product. To create an equitable pilot, we decided to have one teacher from each grade in each building take part in this process. Started with asking our cabinet members to take part. After those slots were filled, we moved to the social studies and science cabinets as we wanted to get their unique perspectives, both on the product as a whole as well as on the interdisciplinary units. Once those groups were exhausted, we then reached out to other teachers who may have been interested in taking part in this additional work. Once we had our group of thirty teachers, six grades across five buildings, we then started working on professional development opportunities to get our teachers to a place where they would feel comfortable starting this new program in the fall. Pilot members were provided with two separate trainings, both virtual and both completed prior to start of school year. As teachers were taking part in the PD, we worked on the ordering of materials, which included manuals for teachers, workbooks for students, and a large number of new texts at each grade. At key points along this journey, we want to evaluate both the product as well as teachers' feelings about the product. To help gather this information, we had our pilot members use the rubric they were introduced to the previous year that was provided by NICE Ed called the Materials Alignment Quick Check Rubric. This rubric allows schools to review key elements of a program to help decide whether it is both instructionally sound and a good fit for our district. This rubric focuses on seven key areas as well as an eighth fit-to-year district component. We also provided pilot teachers with a Google form that asked for teacher comfort in a number of areas, including the use of materials and the instructional routines. Teachers were also asked whether they felt it was a good fit for our district. Additionally, Jen and Allison went into classrooms to use different curriculum-based measures to review growth that students may already be showing. One focus was on fluency, which was a focal point of a number of our discussions. These results will be shared with cabinet at our adoption meeting next week to help provide them with an array of evidence to help make an informed decision. It was important for us to get the pilot group and cabinet together regularly as we knew this was leading to a very important decision that would potentially shift the way we teach ELA for the foreseeable future. We started with a half-day meeting for pilot members to workshop any issues that they may have been experiencing as well as sharing their initial thoughts. This was followed by a cabinet meeting where the information was shared. It was important for us to have this early checkpoint in case the program was already generating red flags so that we would have time to pivot. Thankfully, the feedback was positive, and we were able to continue with our work. During the months between that half-day and our adoption date later in January, we provided a monthly time for teachers to collaborate. These morning meetings started with a very brief update on the process, and then teachers were virtually shifted into grade-level meeting rooms to discuss and continue working together. We did also ask the teachers to discuss any areas of concern that were brought up at the cabinet meeting to see if they resolved themselves, if they would turn into a major red flag, or if they would be something that we could work to gap fill. We're on the precipice of our final stage in this process. After providing roughly half the year to pilot the program, we will bring our group back together next Thursday with the ultimate goal of voting on the adoption of the program. If adopted, we'll start to discuss next steps, including using the spring to start the professional development work ahead of next year. If it is not adopted, we will once again review the options that we have and start the process anew. We understand the amount of time and resources that go into this work, but we also know how important the decision is, so we are working to make a choice that lives up to the high standards that we all have here at BC. We really appreciate your time this evening, and a special thank you to Superintendent Monroe and Deputy Superintendent Dr. Hurst for their support throughout this process.
Turn your mic back.
Thanks. I've got a couple, so feel free to pause me if needed. So I think my first question is, we adopted Foundations, and I'm just wondering, for kids who are not receiving Foundations now, but will be in 3-5 presumably when this is rolled out... No, we don't have any of those, right?
So just to clarify.
Sorry.
It's okay. No, there's a lot of moving parts, and that's one of the things with ELA that's, you know, as a seven-through-twelve certified person and teaching mainly in middle school and high school, getting this job and previously being a principal opens up a whole new world of education that I never got. And what we're also realizing is that some of our teachers, even in the elementary years, did not get this foundation of information. So part of the professional development that we talk about has to do with the program or the product that we purchased. It also is gap-filling knowledge that some of our teachers just did not get. So we're trying to balance these two things with our professional development, and we're trying to do that systematically with the principals thinking about during our Great CI days, during our department meetings, ways to layer in some of this education as well. So Foundations is something that we have for kindergarten through second grade.
Yes.
That's balanced with HEGERTY, so we're hitting, if you remember, some of those, the six areas that Jen talked about, we're hitting the phonemic awareness and the phonics components. Bookworms is filling in those other four areas. So we're thinking about fluency and reading comprehension. All of these other areas, we're working on handwriting, we're working on word work. So that is going to carry us kindergarten through fifth grade.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, so it's a juggling act. And you know, one of the big things that we talk about with teachers is the time that goes into it. Because, look, I would love the whole day to be ELA, but I also understand that math, science, and social studies need their time as well. So one of the benefits of this, and when we're thinking about the time component, is the knowledge-based curriculum. So if science and social studies topics are covered in this, they do not replace science and social studies, so that instruction still has to happen. But the way we structured our pilot process allows members of the social studies and science cabinet to be part so they can look at the books that we're using and say, hey, this really matches a social studies or science standard. We can use this book to talk about the topic, and then we can use that as a point to layer in that social studies and science lesson, so everything is flowing really smoothly together, so it doesn't feel like another, another, another. Kind of help teachers balance their time a little bit.
So Bookworms is a supplemental curriculum to what we're doing in 3-5 now?
Supplemental is one way to talk about it. It hits the other six of those big six key standards that we want to get for students.
So we're not entirely, I guess, when I'm driving it.
Sure, yeah.
Or when I'm trying to drive that, but not clearly with any clarity. Are we replacing entirely what we're doing in ELA in 3-5 now with Bookworms?
Correct.
Or is it, that is, okay?
Again, and I just paused for that just for one second because we haven't gone through the adoption process yet. If it is, if it does pass and cabinet does feel that this, then it would replace the units of study that we currently have in place.
For 3-5?
For K through 5.
For K through 5, yeah.
But Foundations stays K-2? It will be in addition to?
So what we've noticed coming out the past few years is that there's been a deficit of phonics and phonemic awareness work.
Yes.
And we noticed that when we had the units of study, they did come out and they created a different, whole different phonics set, and I think they kind of realized it, too. So that was our first step, and that's why we reflected a few years ago. We knew that that was the first big step that we needed to take. We really needed to shape K through 2 so that we built in that phonics and phonemic awareness learning so that students could progress. What we realized after is that when we were thinking about the other units of study that we still had in place, those reading and writing units of study, they were not fulfilling what we needed for our students. They were a bit antiquated. They were not a knowledge-based curriculum in the way that we're seeing these new products.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
So just one, so just one more on this to make sure I get this one piece. So then, do we have any, either going into, so assuming this is adopted, it seems as though, what I'm hearing from you, it seems as though it's got a lot of support.
We're hopeful.
So should it be adopted and begin to be implemented next year? Do we have any kids next year who are going to have not, who will have had the units of study but no Foundations? And if so, what are we going to be doing? We've identified gaps there. So are we going to, how, what's just the thinking there?
So they will be, so because it's K through 2, and we'll be going into our third year, there will be one cohort that did not have the full three years of Foundations, but they will have had exposure to it. You know, even before we had Foundations and HEGERTY to support that, a good chunk of our students were successful. We just wanted to make sure that everybody was successful, and we knew that we could do better. So they won't necessarily be at a deficit from the Foundation standpoint. Whenever you adopt a program and drop it in K-5 as opposed to slowly rolling up, there's going to be terminology that will benefit those kids who've had it a few years ago. There's things like super sentences as part of this book program. If you learn about super sentences in kindergarten and first grade, by the time you're in fourth or fifth grade, you have the routine down. Some students who get it for the first time when they're already in fourth or fifth grade, there's going to be an X. there's going to be an extra level of learning that they're going to get. It's just the problem that happens with dropping a program in and starting it.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you so much, and let somebody else, but I'd love to come back.
You and I think you have a good question?
Yeah, I appreciate the emphasis on text reflecting diversity of our community and the place we live. Someone mentioned authentic texts. I was curious what an authentic text is.
So, the difference is some companies create texts themselves to fill their need, you know, which makes sense, right? They have a curriculum to teach, they kind of create their own product that goes along with their system. This program, what we really liked is they used some texts that you might be familiar with. Some of the Ramona novels are in there, Walk Two Moons, some really popular titles that a lot of our teachers are already familiar with, that had already been bringing into their classroom.
So, genuinely real books or fake books?
Okay.
Yeah.
Exactly. Yep.
Yeah, this might have just sort of been dovetailing, I wasn't sure to decide, talked about, but you talked about a shift in the, you know, the way that ELA was going to be taught, and also mentioned the fact that some of the professional development was going to have to be overlaid. Can you just talk about the, you know, what the differences that is going to be, you know, from A to B and apples to oranges now?
So, one of the big areas of emphasis is fluency, vocabulary, and background knowledge. So, fluency is a major component of a lot of the different curriculum that are out there, really having opportunities for students to read out loud alongside their teacher. The other two areas, vocabulary and background knowledge, you know, we did a PD right before we started this search. We had a couple of local educational consultants come in. Background knowledge and vocabulary are a great equalizer. When you think of students who have a variety of different experiences in their life, their family gets to take them to museums, and all sorts of different places, they are building this wealth of knowledge. So, when they interact with a text, they're already going in with a knowledge about that topic. When they come across different words, when they come across different ideas, they have this inherent knowledge to help them understand that text a little bit better. So, the great part about all of these programs that we've been looking at is how they're really focusing on building this background knowledge for all of our students. So, for those students who don't have those same opportunities, that aren't getting out there and maybe don't have a text-rich home environment, this is a way that we can build that up for all of our students.
And is that related to bringing in the other subject matters into?
It is, yeah. Yep, because we also know that students are really excited about those things. I mean, when we sit in our kindergarten, all of our elementary classrooms, animals, every kid wants to talk about animals and has this wealth of knowledge about these things. We're finding that same thing to be true about topics that we might see as dry. We sat in classes that are talking about the American Revolution, and kids are so excited to raise their hand and talk about these things. Volcanoes, planets, they're just so excited to share this information. And the great part about some of these products that we're looking at is it incentivizes that. It gives them an opportunity to share all the facts, and hands are flying up.
Then lastly, it looked like Bookworms was a late entry to the process, and how did it come to your attention? I think you mentioned it, but...
Yeah, so our, the people that we work with are ed consultants, brought us to this website, which is called the Knowledge Matters Campaign, and that was really what we used as the springboard to look at all of the different curriculum that we use. As that site developed more and more, they began to add new products to it. So, we would reflect on that, and the products that we initially piloted in those mini-pilots, while they were good, while they had some of those positive traits, there were still concerns raised by the teachers. Issues like the length of the units, we're talking about ten, fifteen-week units. When we're thinking about the texts that they were using, they were always using authentic texts. There were some issues that we had, when we talked to these other districts, and they shared, while they did like the products in their districts, they listed off the issues that they were having with professional development, the issues that they were having with timing, fitting all of this curriculum within their school day. So, we had a hunch that something was off about these two. When we did come across this one, we wanted to make sure that we worked slowly through it to give it the same time, and everything that we saw kind of answered those concerns that we had about the product.
And that was just because it popped up on that Knowledge Matters website?
It did, and one of our educational consultants also, when we saw it, said, hey, I've heard about this, it's pretty good, you should give it the same fair chance that you gave the others.
And then, actually, lastly, what's the, I mean, what's the percentage or the differential in price for these different programs? Are they wildly divergent?
Wildly. So, the one great thing about this product that we're looking at, and again, I really just stress, Cabinet has not made a final decision.
Sure, fair enough.
So, as I talk about this, I do not want to, we might find that next week there are concerns, and we don't adopt it. Compared to the other products, the biggest expense for this program is the books. We have to buy tons of books, which is such a great problem to have, and I mean, lots, lots of books, that are getting into the teacher's hands to do read-alikes to the students, that are getting into the student's hands to do research, to do pair reading, to do choral reading. We are getting so many books, and that's been, that's the big price of this, because you can access their curriculum for free. It's an open-source product. What we buy from them, we buy workbooks from them, student workbooks, which are really nice, we buy a hard copy of a teacher guide, but the biggest expense with this is going to be the texts themselves that we populate the teacher libraries with.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Would this affect how we, or are you looking to change how we're teaching writing, particularly to our third through fifth graders?
It does, and one of the interesting pieces of this is it fits nicely with another program that we had done some professional development with. The Writing Revolution was something that we played around with. It was this book that came out a few years back and was really catching steam. It was kind of a new way to look at writing, and really kind of focusing on building small chunks of the writing before getting into the longer pieces. They have, this program has pulled in a lot of those same key features, things like super sentences, really focusing on making sure a student has a really solid sentence and paragraph before we get into that essay writing, and that's something that we've had conversations about, because it is a difference for our teachers. In the units of study, some of our teachers were expecting to do longer writing at younger ages. This one's a little bit different. This one's really pushing us to say, can every kid write a great, solid paragraph before they get into those multi-paragraph pieces? So, we're excited about that, we're interested to see what happens. The great thing about working on the Cabinet is, and working with these folks, is that we get to take our time, look at things. If something is not working for us, doesn't fit our needs, what's the data that's pointing to that, and how can we gap-fill those areas?
You mentioned that this uses authentic texts and an example of the Ramona books. Will kids still be reading an entire book, or will they just be reading a portion, a chapter of a book?
The whole books.
Okay.
Yeah, and in two different ways. One is through higher-level texts, texts that are a little bit above their grade, that's read by the teacher to the class that they get to enjoy, and there's a whole other section to this program that is devoted to students reading those texts with each other, with the teacher. So, they're getting exposure to texts in two different ways.
Great. And then, I know we brought in foundations a couple of years ago, and now Bookworms, some of those same teachers are bringing this in to their classroom as well. Do we have any concerns that this is too much change for these teachers, that they're being asked to do too much?
For sure, and we've asked that question to Cabinet multiple times. We really want to make sure that we weren't going too quickly, because I get that, hey, I just got this going, and now you're giving me something new, and something new, and something new. So, that was one of the first things that we talked about with Cabinet was, is this too soon? Do we need to take a little bit longer? Because there was talk about adopting it at the end of last year and having this year be our first year, but we knew that was too soon. We knew that there's lots of other departments out there that are working through their needs, and we can't steal all the time as much as we want to. So, we're trying to do this in a slower, measured way. We're hopeful that whatever the decision is by Cabinet, we can slowly layer in professional development through the second half of the year, even if it's not about the product itself. Hey, here's some of the skills, here's what a knowledge-based curriculum is, here's what, here's how to use fluency in your classroom, here are little things that you can learn, so no matter what product we end up with, they'll have some of that background information.
Great, thank you.
I definitely appreciate the sort of going through how the process works, because I think sometimes it's a mystery to the community about how we bring new curriculums in. And, you know, maybe for, this is a question for Dave maybe, but just in general, is the process the same in other content areas, depending on what we're looking at?
Yeah, so for, I mean, I'll speak, I guess, K twelve, but so for K five, all curricular decisions are made by cabinets. So, there's an ELA, math, science, and social studies cabinet, that each one of those bodies has a K two rep and a three, five rep from each of the buildings, the subject area supervisor and principal liaison, to the point of what about ELA, sometimes like, so Allison takes part in both the math and ELA cabinets as an instructional coach, because that role kind of fits. Sometimes we bring reading teachers, say, into the ELA cabinet, but that's the body that essentially makes all sort of curricular decisions. And then, six through twelve, it's more departmentalized, because now you have the subject area experts in each of those departments teaching the courses, so the curriculum decisions are made through those departments. And then, as we had this presentation last year, the cabinet, or the curriculum council at the high school is sort of the overall deciding body. Once departments kind of come to agreement on what things they want to add or remove from the curriculum guide, that goes to the full curriculum council, who then votes on that.
But in terms of making, like, say, at the high school with the English curriculum, if you're looking to add books, change what is being read in different classes, like, you might still do like a pilot of different programs?
For sure, and that's done more at the departmental, or even typically at the high schools, for that type of situation, be done at the course level. And then, you know, typically, all the teachers in course might try a new text, say, and then decide whether that's something they want to move forward with. One more thing I wanted to add about this is, even though the timeline might seem a little bit accelerated, we sort of have no choice. This is sort of a state, you know, as we started this conversation three or four years ago now, the science of reading has really taken off, and this actually, beginning in September, we have to fill out an attestation to the state basically saying that we are providing instruction and curriculum that hits those six points that we talked about, and that we're following the science of reading. So, you know, we delayed, I guess, we moved as quick as we needed to, but also as slow as you need to at the same time, if that makes sense.
Sure. John?
It's very exciting to hear about all the texts and workbooks that are going to be involved. What's, is there like a suggested breakdown of the amount of time on a screen versus amount of time using the workbooks and reading the text?
Yeah, there's not really a screen component to this. There's a physical workbook for students, there's a teacher manual, and as we mentioned before, a whole lot of books.
That's great. Good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So, can you speak to spelling for a little bit, and how that'll be covered? Is that, are we shifting how that's taught? Is that built into?
Well, spelling, so spelling, obviously, we are, K two is foundations.
Yeah.
So, obviously, that's how they cover the spelling in K two. And then, when you move to three, five, there is a spelling component, there's a word study component. I'm going to speak to Bookworms, but as Dan said, we haven't formally adopted it yet. But yes, so when they move to third grade, they focus on, for example, closed syllables, open syllables, things like that, and how using that knowledge of how to break down words and sound words out. So, there is a very big word study component to it. It's pretty neat, actually. They also do a lot of morphology work in Bookworms. So, yeah, there's this very, very strong, it's not your traditional, I get a list on Monday, and you study, 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 and you take your test on Friday, and then on Monday you forget, because you're going to start all over, right? So, it's a little bit different than that, it's really looking at words a little bit differently. So, yeah, but there is a very big word study component to three through five.
Oh, that's fantastic, thank you. And then, we spent, rightfully so, a lot of focus on ELA at the elementary level, which is great and very much, oh, just one question. You were talking about units of study, that's the Lucy Hawkins, right? Like, okay, I just want to make sure I'm picking up on the, all of that correctly. Okay, anyway, so we're looking at K five, are we also contemplating any shifts, middle or high school for ELA?
Not currently, you know, to the question that was mentioned before about text selection process, that's something that we constantly go through at the high school. We spent time last summer, you know, kind of looking at who our authors were, when those books were written, and doing some piloting for new books as well. At the middle school, there is a component of Bookworms that goes through six through eight. It's not something that we have decided to move forward with, but there are opportunities to kind of bridge that five, six gap. You know, we constantly are looking at our data, I-ready in particular, as well as our classroom scores to make those decisions. Are our students successful? Where, what are those specific areas or specific domain that we have to really focus on? Last year, we found that vocabulary was an area that we want to put an increased emphasis on, so we worked at the end of last year to create systematic vocabulary instruction in six through eight. We're working through that again this year. It's not really a pilot, we are going full throttle, but in the same way that pilots happen, we stop and reflect and see what's working and not working. So, it's really a little bit of a different beast in six through twelve, where we look at kind of, as opposed to a product that we can put in, we look at the different domains and say, what are those skills that we want to beef up and we want to focus on? Could a product come in and help us with those domains? Possibly, but there's a lot of work that those professionals can do as well.
Thank you. And then, will adopting a new program have any impact or differences in how we're supporting students who are not reading at grade level?
Yeah, it could, and I'll lean on Jen for this a little bit. There are components of many of these programs that are really focused on that additional support. At this time, in regards to this program that we've been piloting, we are looking at the primary two areas and not the differentiated instruction block at this point, but that is a product that they have that we could layer in as well, if we find that there's a need for that. You know, we have a great MTSS process that Jen's kind of working on, spearheading, you know, so we kind of lean on our professionals in that area to help us move forward.
One of the best parts of this program is the, students have access to a grade level and above-grade level text, and it's all presented with the teacher scaffolding and modeling. So, unfortunately, what can happen, which we're trying really hard to avoid, is students who struggle with reading often read decodable, more simple texts. This, yes, you get that to be able to practice the skills that you have, but you also will always need access to grade-level material, and this really nicely fits that in. So, although kids may not be able to read it themselves, depending on their level of, you know, proficiency, they still have access to hear the content that the whole class is learning and to be able to participate. So, that's a really important aspect that allows access for all kids, regardless of their proficiency level of reading, so that is a relief.
And if we're seeing gaps, is this another, would it be another, you know, pilot of process to, like, would we follow the same steps to assess if we wanted to use the other block you were referring to?
It's really important for us to continue to follow this process with our Cabinet. You know, when we have our Cabinet making these decisions, they are the ones that can go to their fellow teachers and say, this is why we need to do this. It is a really quick way to kind of build that support behind whatever the decision is that's being made. So, yeah, everything goes slowly in education, and we know that, and we're trying to embrace it as a positive thing. We don't want to race into something, we want to make sure we're taking those measured steps before we make that decision, and as we talked about funding before, these things cost a lot of money, so we want to really make sure that we're making the right decision.
And then, my actual last question. You referred to professional development rolling this out, what type of support will we have for our teachers? Is this going to be rolled out in PD over the summer? Is this going to be, how are we approaching that?
We're working through those details. The two, they offer virtual professional development and onsite support. When we talked to one of our neighboring districts who did already adopt this program, they said that the onsite support was very helpful. To them, it's kind of a regular coaching process that they have where they come in. You know, this really comes down to what the needs of our teachers are, and we really want to make sure that the first year is a success, so we'll be working with Cabinet through those decisions as well.
Thanks, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it.
And next is our recognition of public comment on an agenda item. If we have any visitors who would like to address the board on an agenda item, now would be the time to come up to the microphone. Item six, action items, a professional personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through thirteen. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries?
That carries? And, B, support personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through six.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries? Item C, other action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through four. Any discussion?
One small bit. The policy on tobacco use and vaping and such. I know it's not completely clear that vaping of things other than tobacco is also forbidden, and maybe we can look at the wording on that slightly more. That was all.
Was there a particular, just you had a particular sentence in there?
There is.
You would want to clarify?
I can send you a comment if you want, if that'd be easiest.
Okay. So, maybe we can do is we can pull that one from the first read if Ewan has a comment and then you could just, yeah, if you couldn't.
Sure.
Add that and send it to the policy committee.
Yeah, it's trivial.
That'd be the easiest way to do it. So, with that exception, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries? Item seven, recognition of public comment on a non-agenda item. If we have any visitors who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item, now would be the time to come to the microphone. Yes, if you could just state your name for us, please.
Hi, everybody. My name's Danielle Hamid. Good evening, Superintendent Monroe, President Dellenbaugh, and other members of the board. First off, I would like to thank you for your commitment and dedication to the students of the Bethlehem Central School District. As a public school teacher myself, I truly understand the importance of a school board while also realizing the challenges this position often encounters. As I mentioned, my name is Danielle and I'm a resident of the Bethlehem Central School District. I've lived in Glenmont since returning to this area in 2012 after teaching overseas in Dubai. Currently, I'm a special ed teacher at Tech Valley High School, where I've taught for